Oh, it was good. We'll be back. All right, let's do this.
I gotta take a picture.
Are you sure?
Here's out of the phone book. You're not in the phone book.
That's right.
Where's the treasure?
All set? Whatever you were.
The Chair will call the July 7th, 2020 meeting of the City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman De Senzo.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Connelly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Yesterday, the family of Marcia Strumpther, they buried her yesterday. She was the last victim of the Bun tragedy. So again, our hearts go out to the Christopher Hall Miller family, Bill Gibbons' family, and Marcia Strumpther's family. And the flags will, if there haven't been, they'll be raised back to full mass. And we ask for another moment of silence for the families and the support they need during this difficult tragedy in time. Thank you. And again, you know, there's a time when our community does pull together. We've been through a lot of, you know, ups and downs in 2020. I don't think anybody could have predicted this year. And so it's important that we all pull together. And recently, actually, Sunday night, one of Springfield's finest, our police department, was just identifying themselves to a couple individuals. And one of the people just turned around and point-blank shot him at close range. And by the grace of God, they, you know, averted any tragedy coming their way. And for all of us, it doesn't matter if it's Springfield, Illinois, or any city in the country, if the police aren't safe, nobody is safe. And they risk their lives each and every day, and we appreciate their good work. And it's important that all of us support one another, especially those that are trying to keep our community safe. So we appreciate the officers. And particular officer, he is on the amends, a bit shaken up, as can be expected. But we appreciate everybody's support for the, what they do for us. And then it gives me great pride to recognize Mayor's Youth Council. I'll have Bonnie Drew come up and introduce everybody. And they're going to do a recap of what they've, one of the initiatives they did this year. And not everybody's here, but a few of them are, which we appreciate. And we appreciate all the work they've done to engage the city and what, with the schools. So Bonnie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had an outstanding group of young people this year. It amazes me that they just seem to get more vibrant, more exciting, more energetic, more intelligent than possible every year. We've had, this year is no exception. They've been a great group. And just as the mayor was just alluding to, and all of us, a lot of the odd things that we have gone through this year, it just seems like forever ago that we were reading about Kobe Bryant and his accident. And that almost seems like that was a whole generation ago. But our youth council this year, they did a phenomenal job. Our last three meetings, I think, have been through Zoom. And of course, to them, that's just, that's the way we do things. And I think all of us now are becoming more acclimated to that. But one of our special projects this year was the town hall meeting. And I'm going to turn it over to Ashante Hatchett from Lanfor High School, our outgoing president this year, and she's going to start the evening for us.
So back in February, the Mayor's Youth Council had a youth town hall meeting for the young people of Springfield. And those who attended raised several questions and possible solutions for, from a citywide school dance to a free health clinic. Today, we'd like to present on a few topics that stood out. The Park District, potholes, homelessness, and youth activities. So here's John to speak to you about the Park District and homelessness.
And as you come up, if you could state your name and the high school you represent, that'd be great. Thank you. And Ashante's with Lanfor High School. Alderwoman Turner's favorite, is that safe to say?
She's also a valedictorian.
That's right.
All right. Hi, my name is John Schmidt. I go to SHG. How fitting that I have the Park District, considering my mom's on it. Some of the things that we heard, citizens who are under 18, or I would also say those who can provide a high school ID, would like to see reduced rates or even free services provided by the Park District, whether that be golf swim at Nelson or Eisenhower. I believe Eisenhower's open year-round for swimming. By providing these reduced rates for youth in our area, we may encourage them to stay here. And maybe even one day, they will pay the full price to use those district facilities. This creates a stronger bond for Springfield, making it harder to leave here, harder to leave your parents, when you think like, oh, I have this, why would I want to go to a bigger city with millions of people? But then maybe that amenity that we can offer isn't what they can offer. So if we can give that to a reduced rate, they'll want to stay here for sure. I know. We ask as a, for your help in backing us when we go to the Park District. It always helps a little backing, but I guess my mom is on the board. So hopefully that will get us any leeway we need. The other issue I wanted to speak with you guys tonight is about our homelessness. Mrs. Gormly, who was our District 186 Advisor, has informed us before that we have, I think, I think she said around 300 homeless students in our district. And one of the big concerns that was brought up was a lot of these students are not needing the basic essentials, such as hygiene products or just simple, a simple shower. And one of the, as Ashante said, one of the solutions to this could be a free clinic. That would be better healthcare. I don't know how that would be done. We could partner with SIU or anything like that. But the free clinic would be an excellent resource in order to get them the healthcare and, most importantly, the hygiene products that they need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Emma Cox, and I'm a rising senior at Springfield High. At the town hall, there were many complaints about potholes in school parking lots, parks and sports areas, and city roads. Most students have inexpensive cars, so going over a pothole multiple times on the way to school or practice can cause enough damage that students don't have the money to repair, as car repairs are really expensive and most students only work part-time. Students asked for there to be a platform or website where they could inform the city about said potholes. After the town hall, we learned that there already is a website for this, which brings me to my next topic. Most of the city's youth are unaware of the resources provided to them. We ask that the city allocate more time to educate its youth about said resources through social media and the schools, that the youth are aware of places to lodge complaints. The Mayor's Youth Council is more than willing to assist the council in the implementation of these endeavors. Our students may be more inclined to stay in Springfield and surrounding areas if they knew what was already being done on their behalf. We pride ourselves on our city and want it to be a place where the voice of the youth is heard and can incite change. Thank you. And now I'm introducing Liliana.
Hi, my name's Liliana McGuire. I was a senior at Lanfor High School. And I'm here to talk to you guys today about youth unity activities and communication all year round. So the high school students of Springfield and surrounding areas feel as if there are not enough activities that are geared towards teenage youth in the city. They expressed interest in all city events, such as dances and sports events, as well as a teen recreational center. This will promote unity between students of all, providing them something to do with their free time. We ask the city if you guys would help fund a teen recreational center and provide spaces and security for the events we would like to help.
We, as the Mayor's Youth Council, presented what we heard at the youth town hall meeting, as well as some viable solutions. Next year, we'd like to increase our involvement with the City Council by reviewing council meeting agendas and minutes, and coming to council meetings when there are topics we'd like to address. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I would like to point out, and I know it's very obvious to all of you, they're not, they're not tunnel vision. They're not looking at here and now and what's for me. They're looking to the future. They're concerned about their community. They were, they were concerned about potholes. They were concerned about homelessness, about healthcare, not, you know, where our next dance is. And I think it just shows you the right and shining star, just as Ashante said, or Emma said, that they're the shining stars of our future. And I just want to thank them for all they've done. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. I think there's about 70 youth that participated in the town hall meeting, I believe, from various high schools, all the public schools, and then private schools as well. So appreciate you compiling all the information and sharing that with us.
So the Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the June 26, 2020 City Council meeting and approve the minutes. They move in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved.
They move in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
They move in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motions, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no, or no. Aye, sorry. Say aye.
Aye.
Foes, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Aye.
They move in second, any discussion?
Discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Alderman McMiniman.
So we've got two ordinances that have to do with our boards and commissions. And I'd like to compliment Alderman Turner for sponsoring the residency ordinance, I think, as a co-sponsor. And the mayor also, I think it's overdue. We began the residency march to success eight years ago, and we placed the advisory referendum on the ballot. And we've almost completed the job. We've got the police union still to accomplish. And there's a new president of the police union, Andrew Henson. And speaking of the bravery of our police, I believe he was in a situation a few years ago where he responded to a call for help from a female resident of our city. And when he arrived at the scene, and Chuck, you might know the facts better than I do, but there was an ex-convict there that then wrestled our police officer to the ground. And it was a, he could have lost his life in that situation. And fortunately, other responding officers were able to basically save his life, possibly. But he came out of it. So he's the new president of our police union. And I hope that he will help us move towards a residency for our, our police. 60% of our police now live within our city limits. And I know some of the city organizations, including Faith Coalition for the Common Good, they're going to reach out to our police members and see if we can get that type of agreement in our city code and, or actually in our collective bargaining agreement. So I just wanted to talk somewhat about that. I think that'd be a really positive step by our police force to recognize the importance of residing in our city and being as familiar with neighborhoods and our civic activity and all the social activity that takes place within our city. I think they'll be even better police officers as a result. On the other ordinance, I'm going to vote for yes for both of these ordinances, but I think, I was, I studied the State General Register article about the boards and commissions on Sunday. And one statement in there, and I appreciate Brendan Morris here today, he wrote this article. He says that, quote, "Despite concerns about double membership on boards, he could only find two instances of that situation in our hundreds of appointees to our boards and commissions." So I'm okay with having a restriction that you can only serve one board and commission. But I still think that in the case it was presented, in this instance, it was a solution for a problem that didn't really exist, and it was more of a blocking move for Dean Graven. I think he was an outstanding nominee mayor. I think you're, whether someone's, regardless of what side of, what part of town they live in, what gender, age, let's go geography, too. I think you're trying to get some really good nominees out there. And I think Dean's gotten a raw deal on this City Council. I think he would have served very well. And so I hope we don't have this kind of situation arise. Again, now, I think there was a partisan edge to this because, and others can disagree with me on this, but, you know, when Herb Smith served on the, on the City Council as the Republican chair, I thought that there was times when partisanship got into it. And I think that can happen now also. And so Dean is a Republican, and it seemed like the three, three Democrats were leading the, the charge against Dean Graven. And I just think that's unfortunate. I guess an analogy would be this, you know, let's say the coach of the Springfield High School soccer team wants to, and wants to field the best team he can, and then the school board says, no, we want you to put players on from every neighborhood. Or let's say we got a football coach over at Southeast, and he's trying to win games, and the school board says, we want you to have, in each of the 11 positions, a player from each neighborhood. Or in basketball, at Lanfor, you know, the school board says, you know, we want you to have a player from each neighborhood. It kind of defeats the purpose of competitive sports. We want to put out the best team possible. And I think, Mayor, that's what you're trying to do with these nominations. Yeah, we want to get as much broad representation as possible, but it can be difficult to achieve that. Let's face it, you know, some neighborhoods have just a quantity of very well-educated...
Oh, my God, you didn't say that.
Yeah, I did say it, because some of our boards and commissions, they call for expertise in certain areas.
Oh, my goodness.
Or some may have achieved certain, so what I'm trying to say is, we may end up...
You don't want to co-sponsor this one.
What I'm trying to say is, we may end up with more representation from some neighborhoods than from other neighborhoods. That's just the way, I'm sorry that that's a matter of laughter, but, you know, and...
No, it's offensive.
Because all the people who live, because all the people who live in Ward 3 are dumb and uneducated.
I still got the floor. If you want to respond, like, because last time you got called out of order four times a week ago.
Actually, it'll be Alderman Redpath, then Alderwoman De Senzo, then Alderwoman Turner. So I think... And then Alderman Donlin.
I think our purpose is just to get as broad a representation as possible, but knowing that it can be very difficult, it can be very difficult to achieve all that we're going to expect our mayor to accomplish. And I think, you know, our mayor was elected mayor, and the mayor has prerogative to go out there and try to find the best people to fill the positions. And I think we're kind of running the risk of micromanaging the mayor. And, and like I say, I still think that in the case of Dean Graven, that was a blocking move. We can't find someone that knows more about the home building industry. He was a statewide director of the Home Building Association. And then we say, no, sorry, you're not good enough to, you're not the right person for this position. When we had an ordinance that said, we will have someone from the home building industry, we will have someone from finance, we will have someone from the other categories, real estate, and so forth. So before we vote on passage of these two ordinances, I want to get that out in the open. And again, I think, Brendan, you wrote a good article Sunday, when you said that we only had two instances of double membership in all of our hundreds of nominees. That's all I got to say.
Alderman Redpath?
Well, let me catch back up here. But I, first off, I absolutely disagree that this is partisan. I honestly believe that this council is very cognizant of individuals, and we have to vote on each one of these people, one by one, and based on their merit and not necessarily their politics. I, for one, as a Republican, have voted for a lot of Democrats on the boards. It doesn't matter to me. I just want the person in there that's going to be the best fit. I think what's going to happen tonight is that we're going to vote on these two ordinances, and most likely, they're going to both pass. And when they do pass, we're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to bring those, those people, the nominees, up for a vote tonight. And I think it's important that we vote them either up or down. And if those persons fit in the criteria of not being eligible for, for the committee or two committees, then they're going to have to pick. And that's just the way that's going to have to happen. I honestly believe that we got some good nominees, and you're right, this is the mayor's pick. These are, this is his administration, and it's, but it's also our job to be watchdogs of the people's, of the people's house here. So I think it's important, I don't have, I really don't have any problems...
No, it's not directed at you, Chuck. It really isn't. Take our turn.
Excuse me?
It wasn't directed at you.
It doesn't, I'm not speaking for just me. I'm speaking for the, for the, this, this, this City Council as a whole, because we all have to make individual motions, and we all have to vote for individuals. I think it's important that we, that once these both are voted on and passed, that we move to the next order of business, which will be to vote all the nominees either up or down. So that's...
Alderwoman De Senzo?
Thank you, Mayor. I find this whole conversation ironic, because in print, in The Illinois Times a few weeks ago, you said you agreed with this ordinance and that people should only serve on one board or commission. And the only one who ever makes anything in this room partisan, Alderman McMiniman, is you. We don't. I have a lot of respect for Dean Graven. I like the man. He's in my phone. I don't have any disrespect for Dean Graven. This is not about Dean Graven. This is about leveling the playing field. This is about having, when I got the list of boards and commissions yesterday, you all saw what I wrote, that three people on, that supposedly serve in Ward 6, don't even live in Ward 6 anymore. They live in Ward 7, Leland Grove, and somewhere out of the city. So, you know, making this a partisan issue, that's on you. That's not on the rest of us, because we haven't done that.
Alderwoman Turner?
There were a number of issues that were raised in, in, in that statement, so I will address them one by one. Number one, when you said that I was gavelled out of order, I want you to know that there were four of us on, there were four of us on the Zoom. I was not in the chamber, and I did not hear Alderman Redpath when he was speaking. I didn't, I didn't even know that he was speaking until I listened to the council roundup the next morning. And when I heard the council roundup, I immediately contacted Alderman Redpath and apologized to him. And we had a nice conversation about it. So I definitely want to, want to get that out there. The second thing is, is that I'm, I'm very offended by almost everything you said. And I, I believe that most of the residents of Springfield are offended by everything that you said. Everyone who knows me knows that I am fiercely partisan. I make no bones about that. Everybody recognizes that. However, I have always navigated in, in the political arena in a manner where I feel that I have the respect of Democrats and Republicans. And I have been able to, as, as an elected member of the Sangamon County Board for 10 years, when there were five Democrats on that board, I was able to work cooperatively with my colleagues to get a lot of things done in my district, because I do understand how to work with others and how to work cooperatively with others. And I do not let my Democrat passion get in the way of good government, because I feel like that good government is not Democrat or Republican, it's just good government. That's the way I conducted myself as a member of the Sangamon County Board, and that's the way that I have conducted myself for the past nine years as a member of this council. And for anyone to suggest otherwise is, is not only offensive to me, it's offensive to, I believe, all of the other elected members of those two boards that I, that I governed with. The other thing that I find extremely, extremely offensive is that, and I, and I just want to tell you, Joe, it's, it's really bringing me to tears, that in July the 7th of 2020, I have to sit here and listen to someone tell me that there are not enough educated people who live in Wards 2, 3, 4, and 5, and 6, to serve on a board or a commission? Does everybody understand how offensive that is on Ju-, on July the 7th, 2020? I mean, Springfield is a community of over 100,000 people. People live where they want to live. They live where they choose to live. I have lived at the same place since 1982, not because of any other reason than that's where I chose to live. And I will tell you that in, within my community, there are people who are of every economic status, every educational status, every, and they represent every profession that you can imagine, every profession that you can imagine. My neighbor, I mean, my, my neighborhood is full of doctors, lawyers, engineers, janitors, construction workers, laborers, bus drivers. All of those people are in, in my neighborhood. And, and each and every one of them, by virtue of not only their education, or their economic status, or where they live, or their life experiences, are more than qualified to serve on boards and commissions. You know, and when you look at that article, it, it was very clear that I have said many times that for me, this is not an issue solely about race. I have said many times, it's about age, it's about geography, it's about all of those different things. And when you look at that list, the data supports everything that I have been saying for weeks. The data supports that. Whether you realize it or not, Joe, there was a lawsuit that changed the form of government because the people who were continuously being elected to represent the citizens of the city of Springfield were all from one neighborhood, which happens to now be Wards 7, 8, 9, and 10. There was a lawsuit that changed that. So now, instead of having those people serve as members of the City Council, making policy for the residents of Springfield, we have members from 7, 8, 9, and 10 serving on boards and commissions, making policy for the city residents of the city of Springfield. So it's just as, it's just as egregious when that happens with boards and commissions as when it happened with elected members of, of the City Council. So I, 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 I just don't even know where to unpack all of that. But I do believe that most people in the city of Springfield who heard the words that were spoken here will, will rise up and say, oh, my God, Alderman McMiniman, how wrong you are.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I could respond to that?
Actually, it's Alderman Donlin. Then Alderman McMiniman.
Go ahead.
Okay. Alderman McMiniman?
You know, I think if, if my words are read carefully and understood, I think they, they stand up. I think many of our boards and commissions are calling for expertise. And so we have various levels of expertise throughout the city. And we also have, I'll speak up again, for, some of our neighborhoods have a very high civic participation and turnout. I think Ward 7, Ward 10, you get 50, 60% voter turnout. I think Ward 7, Ward 10, you get 50, 60% voter turnout during elections. And that reflects a great commitment to our city and our, and interest in our city to make our city as best as it can be. And so when you've got those kinds of people volunteering for boards and commissions, we may end up very likely with greater number of volunteers from certain neighborhoods than from other neighborhoods. And that all has to be taken into consideration. I, I would have felt better had you also called me for, to apologize because you did interrupt me. I mean, I was in the middle of talking and whether you interrupted once or four times, it was still an interruption. So that would have been really helpful, Doris, to have called. I want to comment too, I'm not saying that every decision is entirely partisan on this council. Clearly Alderman Redpath and Alderman Fulgenzi, three weeks ago, when we tried to get a vote up or down on each of these nominees for boards and commissions, the three of us voted together because we thought that was the fair and right way to go.
Don't get used to that, Joe.
Well, let's get used to it because it'll be good for our city. So, and I'm glad you're proposing that again tonight, that we do an up or down vote on all the nominees and not, you know, block some out because now we have a new ordinance that in the middle of the, of the process is being inserted to block certain nominees that our mayor made. I'd also like to comment on Elderwoman DeSanto being offended because three members of boards and commissions don't live in her ward. Well, Tim Moore did live in your ward at the time he was appointed by our mayor.
Doesn't anyone?
Ryan Crook did live in your ward when the mayor appointed him to a board and commission. And Karen Khan also lived in your ward when he was appointed. So, so it's kind of a, you know, a.
So the numbers are wrong.
It kind of confuses the situation to be, act like, you know, you're getting underrepresented because the mayor obviously was representing Ward 6 when he made those three appointments. And Bonnie Drew, you know, it's best, the best job you can do with all these appointments, you know, almost a mission impossible to try to please everybody, but you're doing the best you can. And so that's it, thanks.
Elderwoman Conley.
Thank you. I don't know if Alderman Donlin wanted to.
You go first.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your generosity. It is good to see you too and it's nice to be back in here. I would, Mayor, I would like to commend you. I think you have been trying to increase civic engagement in the community and, and I appreciate that very much. I, Alderman McMenamin, I'm going to just say voter turnout is not always an active measure of what civic engagement is. And I think it's really incumbent on us as, as alder critters to go out there and, and engage with our community and bring people in. This is not a passive sort of a process. Yeah, I said it Chuck. But it's, no, this is, I mean, there's something, when you, when you talk about a disengagement of part of your community and, and you, the measure you use is voter turnout. I think what that says to me is that we need to be more active in reaching out towards and reaching out to members of our community and showing them that their insight, that their, their thoughts, their background, their, their experience is an important part of the deliberations that come before the city council. And, and I think it's, it says more to us that we're, we're making these motions right now, that we're putting these ordinances forth that really provide direct, a direct result. We want more engagement from our community. We want to see the quality people from every neighborhood in this city represented on our boards and commissions. And I think, Mayor, that the decisions you make will be better for having this, this broad range of voices. And, and I appreciate your, your cosponsorship of both of these ordinances. And I appreciate the outreach that you've been doing. I, I see from Alderman Gregory that you're, you're in his ward on a, on a regular basis and that's important. But we need to, we need to not, we need to not be negligent in, in recognizing that as elected officials, we have a civic duty to be reaching out to everyone in our community, not just our wards, but to creating a path for other wards so that everyone can have a seat at the table. Elderwoman Turner, I, I want you to know I hear what you said tonight. And I am, I am sorry that this attitude came up. I'm sure we'll hear about it and again when I'm done, but it's inappropriate. We have, I lived on the North End when I first moved here, when I represented our school district on the school board. I lived on the North End. And my district for the school board went all over the North End. Chuck, I think you were on city council back then and I overlapped with where you were. And you know what? It's, there's a broad range of people who live in all of these neighborhoods. And if we're not the ones who are actively creating paths for people to, to come before us and to provide their thoughts and their interactions and their engagements, then we're the ones who are at fault. So I'm glad that this, that we don't have multiple people serving on multiple boards. I'm glad that we're making a statement with these ordinances that this is important to us. And I look forward, Mayor, to, to voting on your, your appointments. And I look forward to the, the feedback and the insight that, that your boards and commissions continue to bring. I do hope that we see active engagement on those boards and commissions. I think that's very important. And I realize it's putting a lot more work on Bonnie. And Bonnie Drew, I appreciate that you juggle a lot. We have quite a large number of boards and commissions. But if we're going to be engaging our community, we need to continue to provide these paths for them to be a part of our, of our process, so.
Alderman Donlin and then Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I've heard, I've heard it alleged in this chamber a few times in the last few weeks that there was a, an attempt to change the rules midstream and it was specific, specifically to block certain members. But from what I recall, and I'll use an example, from what I recall of the existing city code is it says that essentially, I don't have a copy because we have the Zoom on our screen, I just pull up the ordinance. But it says that members of the boards and commissions must be residents of the city of Springfield unless the council waives that rule. Elderwoman Turner, I think your ordinance is great. It would strike that waiver language. But the intent of the council, and I wasn't on the council time when it was passed, was clearly that we want people to live in the city to be on boards and commissions. Mayor, you're a cosponsor of each one of these ordinances. I feel that, you know, you brought forward these appointments. If you, you wouldn't be a cosponsor if you thought it was a change in the rules midstream. I think we need to vote on these two ordinances as part of the consent agenda, I might add. Thanks for bringing them forward, Alderman Redpath. And then I like the idea of voting these others up or down. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
On the 23rd, I would have been here one year. When I came to this council, I really didn't want to get into none of these. But since I've been here, Alderman McMenamin, you know, it seems to be personal. It seems to be personal to Elderwoman Turner. It seems to be personal to Alderman DeSanto. Wait, 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 wait. I have the floor. I have the floor. You always talking that. I have the floor. You want respect, give me some respect. And give people respect. I'm just asking for what you asked for. That's it, that's all I'm asking for. Now let me finish.
Go ahead.
Every time, you disrespect these women.
Point of order, point of order.
Can I, can I speak?
No, it's a point of order. We, in this, we have rules that we don't get personal.
Oh my gosh!
Council, do you want to weigh in on it? Can I interpret it, please?
I just want to finish.
The point of order, normally the chair would make a ruling on the propriety of it. However, the rule states that there should not be personal comments as to individual members in any regard, nor should persons in the audience do anything but, for example, address the chair and so on. So the rules do specify no personal comments. However, final action on that is a ruling of the chair if there is a question put forth.
You really helped you out. Go ahead, Alderman Gregory.
I'll change my direction. This city has had history of racial tension and racial ties. And we're trying to overcome that. And, and we're trying to shake it up. And we're trying to add new people, whether they're white, black, or indifferent. But to say that certain wards are smarter than others is the very stinking reason why we can't get anybody on here. The very stinking reason why we, why nobody believes in this city is because of statements like that. And I am offended and I'm hot. That's, that's totally disrespectful when, if we have situations like this. This is, this is the whole reason why this whole country is going nuts right now because of statements like that. This is, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Alderman Hanauer.
Real quick, couple, couple questions and a comment. The people that, on a situation like where we've got a couple of people that are on two boards, can, should we delay their vote and have them make the decision what board they want to be on? Because some of these people may, they may elect to stay on the board they're on or whatever. That's, that's my first question. The, the comment that I have is, you know, it's, it seems like we always get one, every once in a while, people are throwing out partisan politics. And, you know, I never felt like last, the last group that we had, a very good group, that we got into partisan politics. I don't feel like we've done it here. And I mean, I'll just put it bluntly, look at the nine to one votes. That's not partisan. Nine to one votes, how many nine to one votes have we had? It's not partisan. That shows it. So I guess my, I'd just like to know what, what, you know, what we should do on the, on the, people let them decide what, what they're going to be on? Or do we vote them up or down on, based on, because somebody may want to go to a different one, I don't know. But I just threw that out.
Well, my intention, Alderman Hanauer, was to give everybody a vote, up or down, and then they have to make their decision. Bottom line is, is if we delay it, it just prolongs their agony. So let's, let's vote them up or down. They can make their decision. If that's the way the ordinances read, they can make their decision. But I think we owe it to them. They've all been sitting here waiting for a long time. I think it's important that we clear this thing up tonight.
That's good. Elderwoman Conley.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Redpath. I, I just want to say, I mean, obviously we've not gotten to, we're still on the consent agenda, which seems a little long for consent. But I just, I just want to make it clear, I will, I intend to support Dean Graven tonight and he certainly has expertise that is valuable to both boards that the mayor has proposed him for. And I would like him to be the final say in which one he would prefer to, to serve on. And I, I appreciate that you're, you're bringing this, these out. And I'm not going to vote against someone in, in my ward, although I would certainly be happy to support a builder from any other ward, so.
Thank you.
But just, I just want to make that clear. I'm not, yeah, that's my intention tonight is to do exactly that. Because I believe that's the only person currently on the agenda who serves on more than one board. Is that correct?
No.
Yeah. Lakeisha's, and I think that, that she's, that one position has.
She's a year left, I think.
Terminated.
Corporation Council will add some clarity, but then we'll go to the consent agenda and go from there.
Just very briefly, a question was asked earlier, or a comment was made regarding the process of the existing ordinances. I believe the proper application would be the consent agenda that is adopted. And then if there are members that are subsequently approved, they're going to be put in the position to have to choose one or the other. That would be the proper step or that would be my advice to that person, that they have to be in compliance with the ordinance. Therefore, they would have to select, remaining on, if there is a conflict, remaining on the one that they are on, declining this, or conversely, accepting this and then resigning from the other.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Alderman Donlin and then Elderwoman DeSanto.
Just a point of clarification, we, Corporation Council, you discussed the dual board scenario. What about the residency ordinance if that passes?
The residency, that is for new appointments. So I think that has to be prospective. You can't retroactively, like we do with, for example, employees, you can't retroactively apply a residency requirement. But going forward for new appointees, then they're going to have to comply with that.
Are there any new appointees on this agenda this evening? So would, would the, would the ordinance, if the consent agenda passes, apply to one of these proposed appointees?
If they're, it would be my view that they would have to, that appointees subsequent to the, if these are adopted, so any appointment subsequent to that, they would have to comply. And the, the issue with the serving on two, I think is effective now, meaning to current person serving. New applicants, it would be like residency, would be like employees where they would, they would have to comply prospectively. So you wouldn't, if a person isn't on, for example, if a person, it would be my view, were appointed earlier under the old rules and were a non-resident, they would not be forced to comply because under those rules, however, they could not be reappointed.
That makes sense.
And I think that's my, that is consistent with how we've always done residency.
Elderwoman DeSanto.
So in my case, I have someone that no longer lives in the city and serves on two boards or commissions.
Yeah, we'll have to address that probably another time, I would think.
But doesn't that fall under the, what you just explained, that they are currently on a board and that they are exempt from the residency requirement?
If, if a person is currently serving, having been approved prior, I think the residency has to be prospective for new appointments. I don't think you can make it retroactive like we have not done with employees. I'm trying to show that we've had some consistency with this. However, the conflict if you, of serving on two boards, I think applies immediately.
No, I agree with that. Thank you.
If that is of some help.
Elderwoman DeSanto.
And I would just like to point out in the same article that Alderman McMenamin referenced, Dean Graven did say he would like to stay on the zoning committee and not on the housing commission. So there's that.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda? The, one thing I will say is what everybody's seen tonight and what's occurred is, you know, what I love about city government. I mean, this is what it's all about. I think it's important, especially the time we're in, I think we're finally realizing it, words do have meaning, more than ever. And I think it's important that we are cognizant of others and what words mean. You know, I was reading an article my wife sent me and it talked about master bedroom and things of that nature. Well, that comes back way back when. And who would have known that? And so, you know, as we go through institutional racism, things of that nature, I think that's what we all need to be cognizant of. With regards to the board, I think, you know, the numbers, you know, the, you know, my father always said, figures don't lie, but liars figure. Because you can make numbers, you know, I come from banking, you can, we can argue a number and, like attorneys do, argue law. And so, but really with the numbers back in 2015, they're what they are, you know. You had with regards to percentages, male to female, that's what I looked at. 40% female representation now, 29 back in 2015 when we came in. It's not where it needs to be because actually it's over 50% female. The other thing is with regards to minority participation, we'd have to break it down by each category, but we're at 25% minority participation. I think the population's around 26%, but it's 19% back in 2015. And then the age thing is important, but I think that's where it's important that we do have this discussion. Especially on the council, that's, you know, that's why I don't necessarily lobby the aldermen, all the women. And the reason for that is, you know, since someone brought up football, I'll use my own football analogy. Remember the Titans is one of my favorite shows and Denzel Washington's on the field. And it's right before they told him he could get fired for losing one game. And he goes out on the field and he learned that, he throws up and everything else and he's sick about it. And tonight's discussion kind of put a pit in my stomach. But he's out on the field, just like his football field. This is my sanctuary. This is our sanctuary. This is the people's sanctuary. We should feel free to discuss any issue. Any person that comes up needs to be able to know that they can talk to each and every one of us because it's government of the people, by the people, for the people. Simple as that. And so words have meanings. Words hurt. You know, we went through some divisive conversations, you know, the Center for Health and Housing. You know, that's, tonight's discussion doesn't match that, but that was, you know, really trying. And it showed the strength in our community, it showed the ill in our community, like tonight's discussion. But I think it's very important that we do have this open and honest discussion because it shows how far we've come and how far we have to go and how do we get there. And that's why I like this form of government because we have made progress. You know, War II. Uh, you know, War II, I was surprised, we have a lot of representation in War II. Is it as much as we'd like? Probably not. And that's what we continue to work for. I think Alderwoman Conley hit the nail on the head with regards to the pathways, you know, that's why it's important, this is a proactive process, we want to make it proactive and, uh, make sure that we build in success. So we do have, uh, good, um, suggestions or policies coming forward, but really, just, let's not mince it, the final say-so is the city council. We are the representation of our people. And so, it's important for us to have that comfort level and have that understanding that we are trying to do what's best for our community and, uh, work together. Um, and, uh, you know, that's what we all try to do. I think everybody, true to their heart, has Springfield's best interests, uh, when it all comes down to it. And, uh, you know, sometimes, I think the goal's there, how we get there is sometimes multiple different ways. And so, that's the challenge for us, is how do we figure that out? But we're going in the right direction, we'll see, uh, better improvement next year with the process as we move forward. Alderwoman Turner?
Um, I appreciate your, I appreciate your comments, because you're absolutely right, words do have meaning. And you're right, that we've had some very difficult conversations in this chamber with regard to, um, race and other things. But I will tell you that throughout all of those difficult conversations, and in my, um, I was first elected to office in 2000, this is 2020, and I will tell you that throughout all of those difficult conversations, in my twenty years as an elected official, I have never, ever had an elected official who was my colleague say out loud in a public forum that there are people who live in a certain part of town that are not qualified to do anything. That, that is a first in my twenty years of elected office, and I'm, I'm sad, I'm, I'm, I, I really think I'm hurt more than anything. I'm, I'm hurt, and I'm sad, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm, I'm really, I'm sad for our city, because the problem with comments like that is that it allows those individuals, those fringe individuals who harbor those deep thoughts, those deep feelings, it, it, it emboldens them, and it gives them credibility. And they feel like, oh, here's someone that sits on the city council that thinks the same way that I think. And, and it, and, and it, that's the reason why, when, when we have people that are, are, are protesting, and people don't understand why, that's the reason why. When, when, um, you know, when I, when I bring up certain issues, and, and I talk about them, and, 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 and I know that sometimes people around the horseshoe are like, oh, there she goes again, even though you're too courteous and, and to say it out loud. But that's, that's the reason why. Because we cannot, it, I feel like it's my job that I cannot allow those types of things to be said unchallenged, that, so that it, it emboldens the, the Karens of the world, the, the, the Toms of the world, to feel like that they have someone, you know, we, we're already seeing that, we're, and, and, and what I'm getting ready to say now is very partisan. We're already seeing that at the highest level of our government. We're already seeing that. We don't need to see it, we don't need to see it on the Springfield City Council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, Alderman McMenamin?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really sorry if my words were misunderstood or heard to be.
They were not misunderstood.
Different in a way than they were actually delivered, because I never said that we can't find qualified persons from every part of the war, uh, every part of the city. What I said was, there's certain neighborhoods and parts of the city that have a higher concentration of expertise or what we're looking for. If we're looking for a health department, there might be parts of town that have more doctors concentrated there, or if you're looking for engineers, then I might have more, a greater concentration of engineers. And I also want to compliment again the mayor, when we had, when he, when he put together this housing policy council, again, I'm going to repeat what I said last week, I thought it was very significant that our mayor appointed four African-Americans out of the eight seats. And, but there was still resistance to what the mayor was trying to accomplish. And, uh, so I, I thought that it was, um, unnecessary pushback when the mayor was trying to do the best he could do. And again, I, I'm sorry if my words are, um, we, we don't know each other very well. And, uh, I'll say this right here and now, my eldest sister, born in 1944, when my father was on the beaches of Normandy, she later on married an African-American. And, uh, her two children were then raised by my father and mother, and we were raised as brother and sister in effect, because they were of the age difference. Um, every, every holiday, Christian and Julie there. And I think we are a melting pot, uh, country, and, um, I appreciate, Mayor, that what you're saying about, we all have to, um, have a chance to say what we have to say. And, uh, I'm proud of served in the military, where, in my last major unit of assignment, one-third Hispanic, one-third African-American, one-third Caucasian, up at, uh, Humboldt Park Armory in Chicago, for six years up there, once a month. And we, we worked as a team, and we accomplished a lot. And I think we can do that here in the city, our own country can do so, and we've got other ordinances to get to. But, uh, I don't want my words to be misrepresented. I'm just saying that we get a lot more volunteers, oftentimes, from southern parts of the city, and it's hard to get all the best people and meet all the quota, um, achievements we want to, we want to have, so, um.
I assure you, your words were heard loud and clear.
Sometimes we just, people are just buried, it's diamonds in the rough, we gotta find them. They all don't got degrees and work fancy jobs, I'm telling you that.
Yep. That's what we'll continue to do. And, uh, make sure that we have, uh, equal representation, uh, throughout our city. So, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor of the consent agendas, vote yes, those opposed, vote no, the voting is now open, I believe? Or is it? Or just a roll call vote?
Where's it at?
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
I didn't find. Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin?
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley?
Aye.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you, consent agenda passes. Agenda numbers, 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-276, 2019-430, 2020-049, 2020-067, 2020-134, 2020-153, 2020-158, 2020-164, 2020-181, 2020-195, 2020-207, 2020-230, 2020-231, 2020-235, 2020-249, 2020-250, and 2020-251 remain tabled or in committee.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, Alderman Redpath?
May I have a point of order? Uh, I'd like to ask Alderman Turner if she would, uh, one of the ordinances that we, that I'm planning to pull out of committee, out of the, out of the, uh, resolutions and remaining in committee is tabled, can, is it, is it proper to remove that from the table first? Alderman Turner, if you, uh, don't have any objections?
No.
Uh, so how do I do that, Corporation Council? We, can we just pull them out? All?
Correct, if it's, uh, you may recall that we have a rule that provides that the city council may pull a, uh, ordinance from committee for consideration of the council.
Even a tabled ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, uh, it required, does require a two-thirds vote, you may recall.
Right.
And that simply allows the ordinance in to come before the full council for a vote. If it doesn't adopt it, it just simply brings it forward.
In that order, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we remove all the appointments that are in the, uh, in, remaining on, on tabled or in the committee for consideration individually.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Are you pulling one out at a time, or all together?
I'd like to vote on them one at a time, if we could.
Okay. But you're pulling them all out to the debate agenda?
Should I restate my motion to pull them all out of the committee, and then we'll vote on that, and then vote on them individually? That'll, that'll be my motion.
If, if you, if you make a motion to bring forward, uh, I believe the, uh, mayor has the numbers, uh, then if that passes, then it could proceed ordinance by ordinance.
I'll make that my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
They've moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So, uh, 2020-158, should I just read them all out now, or just take them?
You can take them in order, if you prefer to vote them individually, just read the ordinance, and then there'd be a motion.
I'd, I'd like to vote on them individually.
Okay. Uh, 2020-158, an ordinance approving the appointment of Karen Davis to the Housing Policy Advisory Council.
So moved.
Second.
They've moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, uh, vote yes, or are you going to do a roll call?
Well, they're going to do a roll call.
Uh, vote yes, those opposed, vote no. Uh, clerk will do a roll call vote on each one of these.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
Aye.
Alderwoman, or, I'm sorry, Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin?
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley?
Aye.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor, uh, can we ask the treasurer if there is anybody that is outstanding, owes money to the city on this list?
Yep, Madam Treasurer?
Hi, Mary Langfelder, uh, the list is good, nobody has debt to the city at this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I?
Yes, Alderwoman DeSensio?
Well, since we just passed some ordinances, do we need to vote on all of these if, I mean, can't we just pull them all out and approve them all, and then the ones that, I mean, I don't know what the point of is, voting on them individually if they're going to have to make a choice regardless?
My point is, there's some that's not going to be voted on by the entire body, that's why I would ask that they be voted on individually.
Well, I mean, if these ordinances.
Make a motion to, uh, omnibus, omnibus vote for all the committee appointments, pending the qualifications on the residency and serving on two committees.
So those.
For all of those.
Those ordinances will apply to these appointees.
Is that correct, Counsel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to be clear, um, Alderwoman DeSensio, are you talking about just the Housing Policy Advisory Board? Because we do have additional appointments, um, and I'm, I, I guess I was assuming that Alderman's, Redpath's motion applied to all the appointments, or are we?
I, I want to, I want to pull all the appointments out and vote them all.
Yes, okay. So I, I would actually prefer that we vote on them individually, or at least by board, if not omnibus.
Shall we just continue?
Yeah, if, uh, if there's interest, again, either you can proceed individually, or if you want to group them by board, if there's a motion, I think there are, uh, I think four or five for the housing board, if you want to group those together, it's entirely up to the, uh, what is the pleasure of the council.
Is there a motion to, uh, omnibus vote of the Housing Policy Advisory Council with the pending, um, verification of the residency and committee assignments?
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Point of information?
No, because I think there's one of these that's a non-resident that I would have voted for no two months ago.
Alderman, uh, motion passes, Alderman Redpath.
So if somebody wants to vote against one, should they specify that they're voting against that, and when we do, uh?
If, if you recall, the, just very briefly, not getting too complex here, but the, where the motion for an omnibus vote is requested, if there is a objection, then it has to be done individually.
Okay, thank you.
And so, that's what our rules provide for.
That's fine, thank you.
Yep.
Before we vote, Ms., uh, point of information, was it Mr. Duff that's a non-resident?
No, DeeDee Murphy.
DeeDee Murphy.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, okay, we all set? Very good. 2020-159, an ordinance approving the appointment of Roy I. Williams to the Housing Policy Advisory Council. 2020-116, an ordinance approving the appointment of Calvin Pitts to the Housing Policy Advisory Council. 2020-161, an ordinance approving the appointment of Dean Graven to the Housing Policy Advisory Council. 2020-162, an ordinance approving the appointment of Ron Duff to the Housing Policy Advisory Council. 2020-163, an ordinance approving the appointment of DeeDee Murphy to the Housing Policy Advisory Council. 2020-164, an ordinance approving the appointment of Bill Baskett to the Housing Policy Advisory Board. Uh, been moved for approval, any discussion on that, those? Alderwoman Conley?
Mayor, I'm sorry, we also have 2020-235 for Erica Austin.
Okay, yep, 2020, thank you, 2020-235, an ordinance approving the appointment of Erica Austin to the Housing Policy Advisory Council.
You also have other appointments there, LaTisha Purchase, Benjamin.
No, they're just done by, they're done by council.
Those are on other committees.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
So these are omnibus, but?
Yeah, one vote for all those. And if you want to specify a nay on any particular one, you can specify that. Is that correct, Counsel?
Um, yes.
I thought you said they're doing it one at a time.
Um, if there is an objection to an omnibus vote, then it has to be voted on individually.
Okay.
If there's no, if there's not an objection to an omnibus vote on this group, then they could be voted, uh, as a group.
I'll remove my objection to the omnibus vote.
And that means it can go forward with one vote for the entire group.
But we can still reserve our no vote for a particular ordinance.
You may indicate to the clerk if you have a, an objection to a specific one.
Okay. All those in favor, vote yes, those opposed, vote no, the clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Aye, but I'd like to be recorded as a no on, um, 2021-61 and 2021-63.
Noted.
Mr. Lescov, could you note that for me as well, on those two?
Noted.
Thank you.
161 and 163. Alderman Fulgenzie?
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
Aye, except for 2020-161 and 163. Those are nos.
Noted. Alderman McMenamin?
Aye, with the exception of 163, Mr. Clerk?
Noted. Alderwoman Conley?
Aye, with the exception of 163.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, for 161, you have seven ayes and three nays. For 163, you have five ayes and five nays.
Okay. Very good.
So you cast a deciding vote.
Oh, good, I'll vote yes.
For 163.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. The next one is 2020-230, an ordinance appointing Lakeisha K. Purchase to the Springfield Economic Development Commission.
Question.
Yeah, Alderwoman DeSensio. Or, uh, should we move for discussion or approval, or what's the proper protocol, sir?
If there's a, there normally would be a motion on the floor, then recognized for debate.
Is there a motion? Or move for discussion?
Move for discussion.
Okay.
Second. Is Lakeisha Purchase still on the Historic Sites Committee?
Yep. If you'd like to come up, I think her term's expired.
When does it expire?
Her term expired 2/23 of 20.
So it's expired?
Yes, as the practice, they remain until someone is nominated, appointed, nominated, and approved to replace them. So her term is expired, and she has expressed that she wants to serve on the other committee and not on this one.
Yeah, and actually, to clarify that, I asked her to serve on this committee just from the standpoint to have the diversity. She's been active in the Ennis Park Neighborhood Association, or the neighborhood, I should say, and has done development projects, things of that nature. That's why I asked her to be on this, as opposed to the Historic Sites Commission.
So does she have to be replaced, or does she?
No, she can just, no, she will stay, she will be removed.
Okay.
Because she's moving to another commission.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Good move, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed vote no, the voting is now open.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Filginsy. Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DiSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderman, Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. 2020-231, ordinance approving the reappointment of Benjamin Schworm to the Police Community Review Commission. Is there a motion?
Move for passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Good move, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed vote no, the clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
No.
Alderwoman Turner.
No, and let me preface my vote. There is, right now, a view towards a complete overhaul of the Police Community Review Commission. And I just, and so that's the reason why I'm voting no, is because I feel like that we should, that I want to wait and see what that new commission is going to look like before we make appointments. And give people an opportunity to say whether they would like to serve on that commission, the way, you know, the way that it looks going forward. So I'm not, I don't know Mr. Schworm. I don't know, I don't know him, I don't know anything about him. So my vote is not personal towards him. It has everything to do with the commission and not the appointee.
Alderman Filginsy.
I want to ask a question. Are we voting on the commission as it stands now, or as what it's going to be like at some point in the future?
As it stands now.
Do I vote yes?
Alderman Proctor.
Well, I guess, I have a question then, too. When's, I guess, when's the review of this commission going to be done, and I guess re-stated, or mission redone, or not?
Well, is this appropriate time to talk about this?
Sure.
The Police Review Commission, as it's formally, as it looks like right now, is, a lot of people in the community feel is very dysfunctional. It has, it actually hasn't met in well over a year. And when I, the ordinance that, the ordinance that created the commission mandated that they have annual, annual report. And so I asked for copies of the annual report for the last eight years. And Bonnie, and this has nothing to do with Bonnie Odomayre, because they weren't, I'm putting that out there right now, they weren't here then. But Bonnie could only find annual report for the last three years. And the annual report was basically a one-page, well, basically a half a page, just, there were no, there were no cases, there were no cases. So obviously, you know, there are like, people don't know that the commission exists, they don't know the functionality of it. And, you know, they're just, I feel like there just needs to be a review of it, and maybe going forward, it looks differently. And so I know that you have heard me talk about the fact that Alderman Gregory and I are looking at putting together some ordinances and proposals going forward. And the Police Review Commission is part of that package. So I'm not, I'm not lobbying for anybody to vote against either of these nominees. I'm not lobbying for anybody to chime in on what they think about the commission. I was just putting some context around my no vote.
Alderman Redpath.
I understand where Alderman Turner's coming from, and I think the complexity of the Police Review Board is going to change. I think it's important, though, that we vote these people up or down tonight, and let them either go on or understand they're going to, they're going to be on this board. There's probably going to be more appointments from the mayor, I think. And I'm hoping that, that when you do get to that point, Mayor, that you, that we, we're all moving in the same direction, we are. We just got to make sure that, that we stand by this, and these are your appointments. And I'd ask everybody to vote these folks up or down.
I'll vote yes for him to continue. I guess if he doesn't agree with the new mission later, we could always ask for a step aside, I guess, right?
Yeah, I think with the discussion, actually with everything coming up, with regards to the voices being heard, you know, with the protests, everything else, that's one of the first things I brought up to actually, Corporation Counsel and Chief Winslow, is with the Review Commission, you know, they look at cases that aren't resolved, or there might be a complaint after they've gone through the, is it the disciplinary process?
Of IA, Internal Affairs.
And so that's a, I'm sure that's going to be taken a look at and revised back then. And so you fast forward, and I know Alderwoman Turner and Alderman Gregory are looking at it from a different perspective. I know Chief Winslow's looking at it with command staff, he's met with others within the community, talked about a variety of items. For myself, I'm part of U.S. Conference of Mayors, and the individual that helped with President Obama's 21st Century Policing Initiative, the Six Pillars. There, they have a group of three mayors and three chiefs of police, one of them is Lori Lightfoot, Mayor Lightfoot, from Chicago. And so they're going to come with recommendations. And so we're going to have a lot of information coming, so it's going to, for sure, touch on the Review Commission, because I think that's one of the key aspects, is how do you make sure it's functional and moving in the direction for everybody's benefit? And so that's what we're trying to figure out, is what's the benefit? It's no different from body cameras, or no different from having a inspector general. We're trying to figure out what the rest process is moving forward. So it raises that level of trust with the police department, with all city departments, in this case, under Police Review, it'd be the police department and the community, because that's what it's all about. So there will be changes coming, moving forward in that direction. And I think, you know, with the appointments, or the appointments coming forward, these are quality individuals. I'm sure that if they felt they could not serve in the capacity that is changed to, I think they would, you know, say, this isn't for me, I'm stepping down. But I'd be surprised if anybody's willing to serve, that, you know, they wouldn't be open to that.
Okay, so I'll vote yes to give them a chance then.
Thank you.
Alderwoman DiSensio.
No.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
No.
Alderman Donlin.
Just a quick question. Corporation Counsel, does the, if Mr. Schworm is not reappointed this evening, does he continue to serve until a replacement?
I would have to actually look at that, I'm not sure that that's actually happened. Is his term actually expired at this point?
Because that's the way the others-
I would have to, I would have to look at that, the typical process has been, he continues to, that person continues to serve until they are replaced. But I will look at that, if it is rejected, then I'll look at that and discuss that with the mayor.
I'll vote nay.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yes.
Five yeses, five nos, Mayor.
I'll vote yes. Thank you very much. Ordinance 2020-249, an ordinance approving the appointment of Debbie Greenan to the City of Springfield Retired Employees Advisory Commission. Is there a motion?
Mayor, we have another Police Review Commission appointment.
It's down further on the agenda, I believe. Yep, it's down, two more ordinances.
I thought we were going by committee.
We're going in sequential order now.
All right, go ahead.
Sorry. Told you I was banking. I gotta go by numbers there.
It's your meeting.
Moving the goalpost. He's got the gavel tonight, Chuck.
Make a motion to Pat, for her to pass.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for omnibus consideration of these, of 249 and 250, they're both to the Employees Advisory Commission.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes, 220-250, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Mark Hemp to the City of Springfield Retired Employees Advisory Commission. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Good move, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the approval, say yes, those opposed vote no, the clerk will call the roll, thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory. Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Filginsy.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DiSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. 2020-251, an ordinance approving the appointment of Barb Friesen to the Police Community Review Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Good move, and second, any discussion?
I would say she's a very good state trooper, very, very well, well-liked in the state, as a state trooper.
And she lives in Ward 1, so that's why I really like her.
Well, they all do, so what's the difference?
Alderman Redpath's been busy. Any other discussion?
Good to be back in person, isn't it?
She's an outstanding lady.
All those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed vote no, the clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
No.
Nay.
Alderwoman Turner.
No, for the same reason as before.
Alderman Filginsy.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DiSensio.
No.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
No.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Six ayes and four nays.
Thank you. Cheryl entertained a motion, place the, oh, we already did that.
She passed because she was on the table, right? Did that-
She passed.
Yep, six-four. Yep, thank you. We'll move into the emergency passage, in honor of Alderman Redpath. Next item on the agenda is 2020-263, an ordinance authorizing purchase of real property located at Hilltop Road from Edward J. Eck and Eloise J. Eck as settlers, for an amount not to exceed $900, for the Hilltop Road Multi-Use Trail Project for Emergency Passage. Cheryl entertained a motion to place Agenda Number 2020-263 on emergency passage.
Mr. Mayor, if appropriate, with emergency passage ordinances, I'd like to make a motion to have an omnibus vote on these, since they're all related.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2020-264, an ordinance authorizing purchase of real property located at Hilltop Road from Jeffrey G. Tapscott, for an amount not to exceed $1,800, for the Hilltop Road Multi-Use Trail Project for Emergency Passage. Then Agenda Number 2020-265, an ordinance authorizing purchase of real property located at Hilltop Road from Rita Leonard, for an amount not to exceed $4,000, for the Hilltop Road Multi-Use Trail Project for Emergency Passage. And then 2020-266, an ordinance authorizing purchase of real property located at Hilltop Road from Carol E. Hysinger Jr. and Janet M. Hysinger, for an amount not to exceed $2,000, for the Hilltop Road Multi-Use Project for Emergency Passage. Then Agenda Item Number 2020-267, an ordinance authorizing purchase of real property located at Hilltop Road from Bailey R. Cramp, for an amount not to exceed $13,000, for the Hilltop Road Multi-Use Trail Projects for Emergency Passage. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Good move, and second, any discussion?
I'm just really excited for Alderman Redpath and Hilltop Road.
Yay, so am I.
He never talks about it.
You guys tired of hearing about it?
I'm just excited for you, buddy.
I didn't know you brought this up.
All those in favor will vote yes, those opposed vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
An enthusiastic aye.
Alderman Filginsy.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DiSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Well, let me see here, I'm still on the panel.
Go nine.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, thank you.
I vote yes.
Eleven yeses and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, this, this debate agenda, I believe, yep, is ordinance 2020-243, an ordinance approving payment to RW Troxel and Company, an amount not to exceed, to be determined, we'll have an amendment to this, for property insurance policy for 39 City of Springfield properties, for one-year term, for the Office of Public Utilities. Cheryl entertained a motion to place Agenda Number 2020-243 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Good move, and second, Cheryl entertained a motion to amend Agenda Number 2020-243.
So moved.
Second.
Good move, and second, and this is to clarify that not to exceed amount of $2,300,000. Would you like to clarify, Counselor?
Just briefly, you may recall that this was discussed at the committee meeting last week. This is, in a way, kind of a repeat you may recall from last year, where the city is awaiting final numbers and bids. I think representatives of the Troxel Agency is here, and then Doug may want to address this further. But essentially, the same process was followed last year, it was 2.1 million, this year 2.3 million. And they do not have the final numbers, but they're waiting on that. And this is to allow that process to be completed, not to exceed this number.
Yes, Alderman Redpath.
Doug, I had a question. The other night, when you were doing the explanation on this, you said something about not insuring the three plants, or could you explain that again, please?
Yeah, essentially, 31, 32, and 33, you know, one of the big things that we're finding out is they don't want to insure coal plants. That's one issue, as well as, you know, the claim that we had last year on Unit 33, that's another factor. So we thought it was wise to try to take those units out of, out of the picture, to try to increase some interest from the insurers to, to want to insure.
So my, so my question is, is I understand that we haven't, we've obligated that we're going to retire 31 and 32 at the end of the year, but 33 is going to be around for a little bit longer, depending on how we do that. What happens if something goes wrong, are we covered?
No, it would not be covered. So what that would mean, though, is if we were trying to cover it, it would mean that we'd pay deductible of 2.5 million for that unit. And some of the angst is with, like, with AIG before they actually told us last week that they weren't going to cover us any longer, they had some issues with Unit 33, that some of the recommendations that they recommended us pursuing, we wouldn't do, because we don't want to put any more money into the unit. So therefore, we'd say, well, okay, well, we'll take that unit out of it right now. Because the way I see it is, does this, you know, the city council is going to put forward, you know, I guess, approval to spend $2.5 million on a unit that we might retire next year? So with, with the way the market is, as soon as our transmission grades are done in June, you know, it could be hot weather next July, and we want to run the unit for a little bit. But as soon as that hot weather ends, more than likely, the power prices would drop, and the unit would be very much in the negative at that point, and it wouldn't run.
Depending on how the market goes, though, because we, we don't know what the market's going to do next year.
Well, that's true, right.
Because we don't know what natural gas is going to do, and that's going to be effective on how the, how the coal prices are going to be affected.
Right.
So that's, and I just don't want this to be a backdoor operation, to try to shut down 33 prior to what we've agreed to.
Well, I think, you know, what we're looking at is retiring, you know, from the, from the original plan, it was retiring 33 in the fall of 2021 to the fall of 2023. That's kind of what our timeframe was.
That's what I voted for.
Well, I guess the voting for was no later than the fall of 2023.
There you go, that's what I voted for.
So that was the official thing, but, you know, I think with the, the amount of issues that we have with how much it costs to run the unit, and the way the power prices that we've seen this past spring, even before COVID arrived, there's no way that we'll be able to continue to run that unit for another two years. We can't afford it, if power prices stay that low. It's just, this is too much money, with the, to take all the labor and all those things like that, so without really affecting, you know, the finances of the Electric Division.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with the idea of not, not insuring it, just simply because, as you said, we're not going to want to put, let's face it, if, if the insurance wouldn't have covered this year, 33 was gone. I couldn't have voted to pay $6 million to up, to fix the, the unit. I mean, I just, I couldn't. So we're saving quite a bit of money here by not, by not doing so, and also, I guess, getting more people to bid on it, on the, on the- more people to bid on it, on the insurance. So, yeah, I like that idea, you know, I hope that people realize that we're doing everything we can to try to keep this unit going, and, you know, this mishandling of anything could cause it to shut down sooner, so, but, thank you.
Okay, I think that's been the challenge with the insurance, the reason AIG, one of the reasons they pulled out is the six-million-dollar claim, and so, you know, that's just like your car. I mean, you told your car, your insurance rates are going to go up, and so that's the, we're in the same challenge last year where we're trying to get a hundred percent coverage, and Troxel did a great job reaching out, I mean, that's what they do, reach out to multiple insurers, try to get a hundred percent insurance, and that's what they're trying to do right now. And then part of it is, it's not due yet, but it is coming up next week, so I don't know if they want to say anything to that, but that's really the struggle right now with fine-tuning the pricing, is we're trying to reach that level of full insurance, and hope we make it there, but having that claim last year does not help at all.
Mayor.
Yeah, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Doug, and I'm sorry, I was reading, and I think I misheard you, are you saying it would be an additional two-point-five million to include Unit Thirty-three, or that brings it up to two-point?
Our deductible would be two-point-five million, so if something broke on it, we would have to pay up to two-point-five million before they would cover anything.
And what's our deductible without it?
It was a million dollars.
Is it a million? Okay, thank you.
And what will it be for Alderman Ford? Do we even know that?
It's two-point-five million.
It's that same deductible.
Yeah, and that's basically because of the claim last year. So, you know, there's changes in the future that it could go down, but with a coal unit, it might not either.
And they're just shifting the risk.
Correct.
The deductible, they're just shifting the risk to the city as the insured.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Let's see, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Any discussion on the ordinance as amended? All those in favor of the ordinance as amended, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll. Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory. Alderwoman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMeniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes, no nays, Mayor. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, the chair will ask that Agenda number twenty twenty dash two seventy-five, an ordinance amending Chapter thirty-seven, Article five, or six of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances, as amended related to the Deferred Compensation Committee, to be placed on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
They're moving second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you who's going to be on that committee?
Well, definitely, it'll be the changes, Deputy Mayor, the Director of OBM, the Director of HR, then the Mayor would have five appointees, four of which would be union, and one would be non-union. Is that correct?
Just very briefly, the thought process was to pattern this like we've done with the Health Committee, where you may recall on the Health Committee, Health Insurance Committee, there are equal number of those represented under the collective bargaining agreements and those that are not. This would follow that pattern here, where there would be a total slate, four and four, and the preliminary discussion with some of the representatives from the collective bargaining units have indicated they would like this approach. So it would, what, this is just to change the committee, this is not the actual appointments, this is just the structural change.
When you get ready to appoint the committee, I'd like to volunteer to be on that committee.
Okay. We'll take that under advisement.
Thanks.
Alderwoman Turner.
Got enough in Ward One.
That means you're not automatic, Chuck.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yeah, they don't want me on it.
So, just so I understand, I know that right now, there is a proposed change with regard to the deferred compensation, the way that it's handled, so will this committee be in effect and populated so that that proposed change will come before this committee?
Yes.
Before it's enacted?
Right, they put out an RFP, so I asked them to withhold any decision on that until this group is put in place.
So, okay, so, so I do live in Ward Three, so I need to understand.
Take your time.
So, so right now, so right now, there's this RFP to change the way that that committee operates, and there would only be, to change the way deferred comp operates, and there would only be one vendor. So that is, so this committee will make that final decision.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Alderman McMeniman.
With all due.
And Alderman Conley.
With all due respect.
I don't think both of us could be on it.
With all due respect, Alderman Redpath, if he wants to be on this committee, then I want to be on this committee, because I'm trying to kill his request, but, no, I think it's a mistake for Alderman to serve on these committees, because, because, you know, we get our chance when the ordinance comes before us, so if we put an Alderman on that committee, we're kind of stacking the deck, because you're a very influential Alderman, and you might influence the other members of the committee, Chuck, so. Joe, that's not true, I just want to serve the Mayor.
Ward One has more appointments than anybody else, you don't get any more.
I get plenty.
Alderwoman Conley, please save us.
I, you have a lot of faith in me if you think I can do that. No, I just wanted to clarify, so, Mayor, when you talk about four members from collective bargaining units, is it your intention that those will be from different collective bargaining units?
Yes, but we can specify that, probably good to specify it.
I think that would be, if I could propose that amendment.
Apologize, what we'll end up doing is probably with what's called a memorandum of understanding with various bargaining groups, to allow them to, as happens with the Health Committee, allows them to designate or represent, these are the individuals they'd like the Mayor to appoint, and that historically has been how that's been handled.
And I just, I think that's a nice model, so that would be a good one to follow in this case, too.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair'll entertain a motion to place on first reading Agenda number twenty twenty dash two seventy-six, an amendment to Chapter one-ten of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances relating to convenience stores. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair'll entertain a motion to place on first reading Agenda number twenty twenty dash two seventy-seven, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of grant number AJCZZ zero-three-zero-six-six from the Illinois Primary Healthcare Association in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars for funding the twenty-twenty census and authorizing supplemental appropriation in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
So moved. Second.
They're moving second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business coming before the council? Alderwoman DeSensio.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to also acknowledge the Springfield Police Department and how they handled the situation on First and Cedar, which is in Ward Six the other night. It could have turned out very, very differently, and it could have been very ugly for the city, so I want to praise the Springfield Police Department and how this was handled.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Unfortunately, Alderman Redpath left, his answer to his not having eighty establishments waiting for liquor license, we checked it, it's actually two, so they are being processed, and their background check is being processed, so there's only two, not the referenced eighty last week.
So who checked those?
Corporate council did.
But who signed off on them?
On the two?
The permissioner?
On the two, yeah. That's a loaded question. I think that was it. Any new business? Alderman Donlin, and then Alderman Hanauer, and then Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor, just very quickly, I just want to wish our dear friend, Council Coordinator, Tim Griffin, his birthday is on July ninth, and he couldn't be here, obviously with this time, I understand he's recovering and doing quite well, it's a slow process, but we wish him the best and keep him in our prayers.
Great, thank you.
And happy birthday.
Yep, happy birthday. Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, Mayor, I don't know if this is new business or old business, but we've got that I-Three broadband that's currently out in Ward Ten, and they came through my block, and they do a good job of repairing the grass when they're done, but, you know, I know that they say that they put out notification they're going to be there, the notification is simply, I-Three, we're here, you know, it's a marketing, and we got to get, we need something that says, we are doing construction, and we will be on your easement. I've gotten numerous calls from people that are just, they come home, and there's a big, well, the big core, you know, core driller, you know, and it is in there, they try to keep it in the easement between the houses, but nobody, you know, they say they send out a bunch of notifications, well, they, I looked at every one of them, and it's no different than a campaign flyer that we send out. It's, you know, I know they're coming through my ward, they're going to end up coming through other people's ward, and you know when they go into a new block, because you get calls, and I had someone that was very upset yesterday, I've tried to explain to people that, as corporate counsel explained to us, this is FCC-related, we cannot stop them from doing the work, but I just wish they would do a better job of putting out something, forget the trying to sell people, say, we are going to be doing construction on your house, big orange flyer or something, because they certainly didn't do it to my house, and they were just there last week, and now they're down the block, on another block, and people are furious, and it's every block, and I don't blame people, you know, I don't, so, I don't know if we can, I don't know who's responsible for that, but somebody needs to say, look, you guys need to either start, change your flyers, or you're going to have to knock on doors, and I don't think they want to do that.
Yeah, I have a meeting scheduled, not till the twenty-first, so we'll move that up, try to address those issues, and I think Alderwoman Conley brought this up last year, it was in your area, I believe.
I did, and actually, I just spoke with one of their Peoria, I think it was the Director of Sales, and they are very responsive, so I think, and I was dealing with a very specific property issue, but, and they, you know, sent me an email right away, they're heading back out, they're going to look at the property, but I think they, you know, maybe even if we just reach out to them and just say, you know, this is the feedback we're getting from our wards, and give them that suggestion, I think that would be a good idea, because I am hearing from people again, and some of this is delayed from, you know, one woman had property damage, things happen, but they were fixing it in the spring, and it was right in March, and she wasn't sure, you know, with everything that was going on, should there be people, unmasked crews of people working in her front yard, so, you know, certainly, they have a lot of work to do, but they have been very responsive when I've reached out to them, so at least we have that in our favor.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
This is the first, thank you, this is the first time I have been in these chambers since March seventeenth, and I came back to a mailbox full of paper, this literally that high, and I think we should, as a council, be working to be more green. It would be nothing to, you know, it would be cheaper and better for the environment if we just, if we had laptops, if we had iPads, if we had something that had everything loaded on there for us, because, I mean, we all have our home computers or whatever we use, but it was a ridiculous amount of paper that was completely outdated, that all just went into the recycling bin.
You can write notes on it.
I think we need to be more cognizant of that moving forward. Anyway, I also wanted to wish Alderwoman Conley a happy belated birthday, she likes to hide from it, but she turned forty again on the Fourth of July, born on the Fourth of July.
Nice.
No, 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 I was in June, but thank you for.
Oh, you were in June?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I thought your birthday was the Saturday.
I kept it way on the DL, yeah.
Well, anyway, so there you go, even worse, happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
Yes.
Alderman Gregory.
I just wanted to speak on, I know we have a lot going on, I know we all have received several emails about these FOIA's and stuff, so very briefly, I just want to just, you know, our media members, you know, I know me, myself, and I can't speak for all the other Aldermen, but we are very transparent, and, you know, we really don't have too much to do with that process, we rely on corporation counsel to work that out for us, but we will always fight for transparency when we can, and, you know, we see the messages, and I just, you know, got off the phone with one before council, and, you know, I promised them that I definitely would speak, and definitely let everyone know that our multiple sources of media are really harping on that, and, you know, I just want to bring that, you know, say that, that I do support whatever, you know, we need to do to try to help them.
Great, thank you. I'd like to recognize Ryan McCready from the SSGA, Springfield Segmen Growth Alliance, do you want to come up and say a few words?
What's the question?
We appreciate you coming to the meeting, I think you picked a good one to come to.
Yeah, welcome back. I'm sure they're all good meetings, so I have no doubt about that, but thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, just excited to be back in Springfield, officially a citizen of Springfield again, so my family and I are very grateful for the opportunity to come home, and I look forward to working with all of you, reached out to many of you and spoke to you, so thanks for the warm welcome, and if there's anything we can do to help you out, let me know, but working together with you to grow the economy of our community, and that's the goal, so, and thank you for your support of the Alliance, greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, we're glad you're back. Ryan and I first met in banking, he was at Linnite Bank, I believe, at the time.
Yeah, a long time ago.
I might have been at the security bank, and then we met again when I was on the County Board, you were with the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, you were, you spent a lot of time going over the bills and asking me questions about those, so you're very, the banker in you was show, was very evident during those meetings, so I appreciate your oversight there, so.
But you did a lot of great things in Decatur, and that really is, will be helpful, especially when you look at today's economy, it's more about a broader region, not just county, not just city, it's the region, and how we can complement one another, so your knowledge will really be beneficial in that.
Well, thank you very much.
Ryan, you had Brian McFadden's job as County Coordinator in the past, is that also one of your roles in the past?
That's right, I left the county in late two thousand eight, as County Administrator, to go to Decatur to be City Manager, and did that for about six years, and Brian McFadden fills that role right now for the county.
Thanks for bringing your expertise back to the city and county.
Well, I appreciate it, we're grateful for the opportunity to come home, my family's grateful, my parents and in-laws are really happy, too, that we're close to home, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then, yes, Alderwoman DeSensio.
I'm sorry.
That's right.
Very, very quickly, you might want to consider a different appointment to the Board of Health, I'm happy to withdraw my name since it's obviously an issue, so.
Well, since you brought it up, I did check the county, I think they have twenty-seven percent of their appointees are female, and I think you would be good, because you would help bring that number up.
Well, I'm happy to serve, but they don't seem to want me, so.
I think Corporation Council, you want to weigh in? We just talked about this before the, we just talked about this.
Point of order.
Go ahead, Counselor.
The, just very briefly, we have reached out to talk to the appropriate persons about clarifying that intergovernmental agreement, we, there's a couple of ways that can address We, there's a couple of ways that can address the issue. And we're right now waiting for a response or a meeting time with the county. They have the ability to, I believe, increase the number of board members. That would allow the, those to be designated. That can be done via an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement. And seems to me a pretty common sense solution to the current question. The, there are other potential issues there with the county which will also need to be addressed. However, that's probably the most pressing one right now. They did provide the letter, Mayor, and I don't know if you had mentioned this to everyone before, but the letter regarding the Ennis Park Tiff.
Oh, no, go ahead.
They had provided the letter at the request and we're waiting for the letter for the Pillsbury Tiff Extension Area. So I think we're working through that process, but there is a solution. I think that we may properly have an amendment that would allow the appointments to go forward.
Well, then I'll just hold on a little longer. It's only been since October.
Yep. Any other discussion or new business? Then we have Hilda Reyes.
Yes.
I want to address the council.
Thank you, Mayor.
You can state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Since the protest that Sean Gregory attended, there have been many issues on the different racists going on. However, I make up a number of maybe 1% here in Springfield. I'm a Latina. And ever since the riot or protest began, the Latinos was like, oh, what about us? What about us? So therefore going on that. Since the protest began, there's been, I live in Ward Two under Sean Gregory. There's been shootings on Butler Street. And there's been drug activity where was formerly known the Victoria Apartments. Now they're Whispering Meadows Apartments now. There have been drug activities and vandalism on Laquisha's property, which I live. So therefore, I was wondering if we can, like, put extra patrol on our blocks because of the fact that there are disabled people living there and geriatrics, too. So that was most of my concern.
And what's the address again, please?
Um, 2224 Bradley Court. That's where the place I live. But I'm not sure the address where formerly considered Bradley Court was.
Okay.
And Victoria Apartments now is the Whispering Meadows Point.
Okay.
And then behind there, like I said, on Butler Street, there's been shootings. So therefore, I would like to request from the eldermen and elderwomen, I admire you, for more patrol around there.
Yeah, we'll bring it to the attention of the police department and ask them to do that. Usually, they will do that automatically, but we'll make sure.
Okay.
Pass the information along.
Because there are people who like, who enjoy their walks around the little pond area where in back of my residence is. And it's find it complicated to walk because, you know, the shootings, the insecurities of getting mugged or, you know, so that'd be great.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
And thank you very much for taking, taking control of the pandemic era. So I admire you.
We're all doing our part.
Yes.
For the most part.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Any other new business or Alderman Gregory?
Yes. Ms. Reyes, she does live in Ward Two. And, you know, but this is a classic example of what we have to do in our community. This young lady, she had a few choice words to say about me on Facebook and, you know, because we had a misunderstanding on what Black Lives Matter meant and what the whole cause was and things. And, you know, after some trials and tribulations and things, she's up here now. And this is how we do it. This is how, if you have a problem, you can call me anytime. You can email me anytime. And that goes for anybody who may not like what I say, and that's fine. But this is how it goes. And I promise you, we'll work on that issue for you. And, you know, from hereforth, me and you are going to have a beautiful relationship.
Like I've explained to you when I came face to face, because you didn't know me. I know everything about you, but you didn't know me. I volunteer for many agencies.
I know.
And to you, education, we don't get that choice where I come from, being very well educated about things. You come from, you said you were in Humboldt Park for Army issues, right? Well, I was born and raised there. And I chose to come to the city to build my life around, from the criminal activity. So what you said was very offensive to me. So please be mindful of your words of choice.
I'm sorry if any of my words hurt you, but yeah, I was very aware of, that was called the heroin capital of Chicago, Humboldt Park, in the Northwest Armory there.
Yeah.
Very dangerous place to live. And so I know what you left.
So please do be mindful of the choices of words that you say.
I think I try to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or anybody who wants to address the council? Motion for adjournment?
Second. So move.